I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, now called to order the December thirtieth, twenty twenty four, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Whit.
Here.
Commissioner Koho.
Present.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll calls complete.
Okay, thank you. If we could please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is approval of today's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add item seven C allocation of ARPA funds, please.
Okay. Do you want to give like an explainer or anything? I'm not sure.
We have until tomorrow to do it or lose them, so I think we should probably put it on the agenda.
Yes, that.
And I'll that's I'll second that to add ARPA fund discussion as seven C. Do we have any further commission discussion? Okay, seeing none, move to roll call votes. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the irregular meeting minutes from December ninth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item is six A public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move into seven A, public hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers related to the proposed amended use of funds for the twenty twenty four budget of the City of Abilene, Kansas Finance Director Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Municipalities are authorized by Kansas statute seventy nine dash twenty nine twenty nine A to amend one or more budgeted funds. The amendment process is the same procedure as with an original budget and has to be completed before the end of the budget year. The City of Abilene is going to hold the budget today so that we can amend the twenty twenty four budget to increase the capital improvement fund from allocation of zero funds to four hundred thousand funds. Because four hundred thousand funds was projected and originally budgeted to be spent in the twenty twenty three budget, but was coded to the speci- to the special street fund incorrectly. And in order to prevent a cash budget violation, the city has to propose recommending the budget amendment to allocate the spending of the CIP funds in twenty twenty four because they did not get spent in twenty twenty three. They did, but it got spent out of the wrong fund.
So we've already violated the budget?
No, because we have until December thirty first, right now, if we were to submit our financial audit and statement, because we have not authorized ourselves to spend the CIP fund, which we have funds there, that's what causes the violation. We're preventing that.
I thought you just said we'd already spent that money.
Well, the money, the money was supposed to have been coded to CIP in twenty twenty three. It did not. It was authorized and and that and it was authorized to spend in twenty twenty three, and that's where the budgeted funds were. So it got carried over in twenty twenty three into twenty twenty fours fund for CIP. So now the CIP budget has four hundred thousand plus dollars that is sitting there. We need to move that over to cover that street fund that was actually paid. It was for fourteenth street.
So it was originally supposed to come out of that CIP fund, but it canceled the street fund?
Yes. Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
So we didn't have the budget violation because that wasn't a budgeted, because that budget was okay and it covered itself, but it should have been coded to CIP and that CIP fund should have been spent in twenty twenty three. But because of that, twenty twenty four has a carryover and now we have to spend it, but we didn't allocate ourselves any money. We put zero. So even though we have the funds, we can't spend them. We have to, we have to, uh, we have to give ourselves the authority to spend that money by putting that in the expenses.
So I'm still a little confused here. Where are the funds today?
They're sitting in CIP. Capital improvement.
Four hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and thirty three dollars.
That's correct.
And that wasn't spent on fourteenth street?
It, well, it should have been.
Why and why is that?
Because that was part of the project. It was said to be, it was going to be coming out of street fund, ARPA fund and CIP fund. But when that actual bill came and was supposed to be paid, the money was either never moved, never coded. I mean, the money is still sitting there because it got paid out of street fund. All of it got paid out of the street fund.
So we spent money out of the street fund without authorization?
We had the op- It was part of the budget, yes.
But it wasn't. We we said, hey, here's the amount for the street fund. Here's the amount from capital improvement. Instead of coming out of capital improvement, like we said, it came out of streets.
That's correct, but it still did not give us a bu- budget violation. I'm preventing the budget violation now because of the taxable fund that we have that needs to be spent.
Because the special street fund is always budgeted for the full amount.
Exactly. I mean, whatever we have, we give ourselves that authority.
And you're talking about a pie breakdown for a specific project, which-
Yes, it sh- it was supposed to be split between the three funds. And we were able to fix the ARPA because ARPA does is not is a non-budgeted fund. We fixed that this year, should have been spent in twenty twenty three as well. I did not catch that there was also CIP funds for that project, which is why I'm having the issue of that particular fund being negative when it shouldn't be. And that's where we'll have two violations if we don't take care of it because we'll have overspent that fund in twenty twenty four and we will not have spent the money that is sitting in CIP that can cover that. And we have to allocate, we have to give ourselves the permission to spend that money.
So on our agenda here, it says public hearings, looking at City Attorney Martin. So is it mayor need to open up a hearing on this, kind of like what we do for normal budget stuff?
Yes, we will follow the exact same process that we followed for the original budget. So you'll open a public hearing, take any comments from the public, close the public hearing, and if you choose to do so, adopt the ordinance that amends the twenty twenty four budget.
Basically just a coding error because I mean, the the funds were supposed to be spent. They were just pulled out of it, the wrong account, or they were all pulled out of streets versus separated into those three. You're able to cor- correct ARPA.
Just to clarify with, um, at the time that was going on, Lon was here and he had done that project and a lot of us missed when that particular agenda item was put through in twenty twenty two. It was identifying those funds and we weren't here. So the the majority of us that were sitting there trying to code these weren't aware of that, should have been and were not. I will take full responsibility for that because the fiscal note in twenty twenty two's agenda had those CIP and it was correct. In the twenty twenty three budget, it was correct. It just didn't get coded right. So in it, yes, it's a coding issue. Um, because we should have either moved the funds or coded the funds, one of the two, to make sure that it got spent out of those correct three funds. I've I've already transferred and moved the ARPA funds. I did that earlier this year, but I cannot do that with CIP because it's, because it's a taxable fund. I can't just say we're going to spend it. We didn't authorize ourselves to do any money from the CIP. So yes, we're trying to fix what should have been done properly in twenty twenty three.
But everything, that's the same. Just, yep.
It all works out. We have the funds, yes.
I'm still not clear. You have to, I'll apologize for being dense. We approve this in the twenty twenty three budget.
The expenditure.
It was-
And then twenty twenty three, so it carried over to twenty twenty four. However, we did not authorize ourselves to spend it in twenty twenty four. We missed, I missed that on the review of the budget before we submitted it, therefore we presented it to you guys.
So this was allocated in twenty twenty two for twenty twenty three, those funds rolled, and then were just coded incorrectly going from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four.
That is, that is exactly correct, I would say. I mean, in a, in a boiled down nutshell.
They coded CIP, we should have shifted them to street fund, pay out of that.
Yes.
Or coded to the bill, we used that amount. There's a number of ways it should have been done, but the bottom line is we did not authorize ourselves to spend that money this year. And that was just, that was just an oversight.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the purpose of answering objections of taxpayers related to the proposed amended use of funds for the twenty twenty four budget of the City of Abilene, Kansas. Uh, do we have anyone in the public here that would like to address the commission on this item during this public forum? Seeing none, I'll now close the public for, public hearing. And I'd move to seven B, consider approval of ordinance number two, four dash three, four, five, six, and ordinance amending the twenty twenty four annual budget for the City of Abilene, Kansas in confirmation with the cash basis and budgetary laws of the state of Kansas Finance Director Johnson.
Um, with what I was saying, I'm just asking that you would approve the ordinance so that we can, um, shift that four hundred thousand dollars where it should be over to special, to the, to the street fund fourteen from CIP fund eighteen to fund fourteen. And then we have to, I would like to clarify, I did have to, in order to make the state worksheet correct, I had to put the entire budget, the entire fund amount has to be indicated. So it's showing four hundred and fifty four thousand nine hundred and thirty three dollars. But the expenditure is to allow the four hundred thousand dollars. That would put carryover of fifty four thousand dollars into twenty twenty four. I just wanted to clarify that.
I move to approve ordinance number two, four dash three, four, five, six.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I guess I would just like to ask my fellow commissioners, how many more half million dollar mistakes we need from our city manager before we decide we need to change? Uh, I think I've made my position very clear. The city manager is solely responsible for the budget. I think it's kind of, uh, Ms. Johnson to, uh, attempt to put that on her own shoulders, uh, but that's not where that responsibility lands. I'm going to vote for this. But my vote is also for competent city management.
Do we have any other commission discussion? Okay, seeing none, move to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven C ARPA funds discussion. Uh, Commissioner Kohoff?
Finance Director Johnson, can you give us an update on the amount of funds that are available? I think off the top of my head, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty one thousand after we allocated fifty to the water treatment facility.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars and one hundred thirty thousand, thirty one dollars and five cents.
One thirty, thirty one, oh, five. Finance Director Johnson, what is required to allocate those funds? Can that be done? Just, what, do we need a resolution to do so or just a statement by the city?
We just need to indicate how, where we're going to be, where we're going to be spending it. It just needs to be, um, like you said, allocated. It needs to, we need to say, identify what we're going to be spending it on. And I know that the discussions have been to help with the streets. Um, the gravel and the rock is extremely tight for their budget because of the amount they've had to purchase and the cost of it.
Um, and in the previous discussion, you had mentioned about this ARPA fund, since it's, it's a granted fund, not a taxable fund, does that, does that allocation have to be a commission direction or is that, can that be approved administratively?
It can, it can be approved administratively through the process of your, of your purchasing. Um, I will tell you when I did the twenty twenty when I did last year's budget or for the ARPA, I went ahead and had already put in the, in the, in the actual report that we were going to be expending all of that this year. So I've already indicated that we will be spending it. So that has been taken care of to cover us for the federal requirement. It's just a matter of saying where we're going to spend it and and moving it in January or sometime in twenty twenty five.
Gotcha. Yeah, because, yeah, I was reflecting back since we've had these funds. I don't remember specifically designating which, which sort of thing, other than-
I believe the, the, it, what was indicated to me was it was going to be covering operating expenses because that's what most all of it has been for, short of those couple of special projects that specified the ARPA funds. Um, and so that's what I ended up indicating on last year's, um, report, or indicating we would be, uh, finishing that particular amount of whatever our fund is for whatever operating expenses we needed to cover.
So we're good on the fed- what you just said, we're good on the federal requirement? No, action needs to be taken.
We just have to spend it. Yep, we just have to move it in, in twenty twenty five.
So you've approved the allocation when we've allocated money from it, you've approved it as part of the budget? So.
But that hundred and thirty is not allocated. I'm, I'm looking at direction from the National League of Cities.
In our budget? I mean, it's, it is.
We have, I I believe it's twenty five thousand, maybe a little more going to our alley and gravel or, or, excuse me, our alley and rock fund line item. Because last year we, we went in the hole there and we want to make that hole start here with with a positive number there. And then, um, the rest was to the streets, the street maintenance fund is what we allocated it to.
So just so I'm clear, I'm relying on information from the National League of Cities. They have a nice little article here. It says, as the twenty, December thirty first, twenty twenty four obligation deadline for ARPA state and local fiscal recovery funds approaches, many local governments have a question about, about what constitutes an obligation, how to use affect funds effectively and stay compliant. Below, we offer some guidance. Uh, one, what is, uh, the obligation deadline? We're aware of that. What qualifies as an obligation? An obligation is a contract, subaward, purchase order for goods or service, or enter agency agreement, example, MOU MOA. And obligation is not a budget allocation or amendment, an intention to enter a contract, moving funds into a general fund, but not further establishing an obligation with those funds by twelve thirty one, twenty twenty four. So what I'm hearing is that what you're saying is that second part, which is not obligated. And that, again, I wish I had that knowledge on my own. I'm relying on the National League of Cities to provide that information.
In answer to your question, um, we had discussed, Ron and I had discussed the city manager, where this hundred and thirty thousand, we, we had originally put it. We were using it for this room, so we were finishing up all of that to find out how much was left. And again, it was discussed to make sure that whatever was remaining of that hundred and thirty thousand, we were, there was specific things broken down by twenty five thousand dollar increments to cover those purchases that we have already made, but then to put into and cover those for operating expense. It was, we, we told ourselves we were going to be spending all of that money in twenty twenty four. It's just a matter of making sure that those get done.
We have about twenty four hours.
It yes, it-
I guess what I'm saying is, number one, I I'm not really happy with the process of, uh, the city manager choosing up, chewing up projects, twenty five thousand dollars at a time because that's his spending limit for funds that I believe really were intended to be used for capital projects and that sort of thing to benefit the city. And again, I'm still not certain that what you're saying obligates those funds in accordance with federal law.
We will double check, but I would argue that spending them on fourteenth street, which is a capital project, would constitute, would, would meet that requirement. So we'll, so we'll, uh-
Well, it hasn't been spent there and the city's going to have to obligate that. The city, the city commission has to obligate those funds if that's what we're choosing to do. You can't do that tomorrow because you feel like it. Is that your plan? Just to spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars tomorrow without authorization from the commission? Those funds have not been allocated anywhere. Where are those? You're, you're saying you're going to spend them on general funds. That's not an obligation. That doesn't meet the letter of the law from what the National League of Cities is telling us.
Are there any other resources I guess you're relying on that stated that the way we're, it's being done right now or how it's planned to be done, that it's kosher?
I was just going by what I had done for the report for the previous, for the previous year and how they advised how to do the reporting. And I, it was, that's how we obligated it.
Back or anything that we are delinquent in spending our funds, we follow, we actually follow municipal guidance on this, so.
The issue with last year and this year is that this year is a hard deadline. Twenty twenty three funds can roll over, twenty twenty four, there's no rollover. They have to be allocated by tomorrow. Obligated by tomorrow, not allocated.
It would be my recommendation, if that's what we need to do and we want it, we only have today, is we need to cover the street fund. The street fund is desperate, desperately negative. I was, I'm hoping the CIP would catch it up. I know we had, um, I think I'm still looking at one K dot reimbursement. So if it was something that needs to be done by the commission, I would recommend that it all gets allocated to fund fourteen, that hundred and thirty thousand, short of the twenty five thousand to color, to cover alley and rock. And that would be my recommendation based on what our funds look like right now.
Why is our street fund negative?
Because of fourteenth street. That that was a large project and the gas funds, we have a lot of things with the gas funds that get spent and there was a lot of things that got I should say they were more expensive than what we, we had. I don't, I'd have to look at specifically what our gas tax came in at and what we, um, what we had to spend for, like, again, some of those patching and all the different maintenance required of streets. Some of that comes from the gasoline tax fund, some of it comes from general fund. Um, and I think whatever we spend the gas fund, then it gets done and we have to cover it with our general fund. So that's where we are. And I think, again, part of that I need to review because there's been some, I just need to make sure that some of that maybe should have come out of the general fund or if we didn't have the ga- I need to look at the gas tax amount and see if it was overspent. That's one thing I was going to be looking at for the financial review, um, and getting that all copacetic, which is why I would request that if we want to just make sure that that fund stays good and doesn't get the violation, we can move the yeah, the rest of the ARPA fund for those particular projects out of the street fund.
So what it sounds like is that we had a budget for fourteenth street and then we went over that budget.
I, I'd have to look at what the actual amounts were. I don't know that it was over.
I do not believe we were over on fourteenth street. I think we hit our, we had the money. We had a lot of cash on hand for that. Part of that is that CIP money that we, you just authorized us to, to spend this year. I think what happened, or I don't think I know what happened in the course of the project, in the course of changing, I mean, it's just there, there's a lot of reasons. The bottom line is there were some things that did not get coded, did not get placed, spent out of the right budget area line item, if you will. And because of that, it looks like we're it does show up as a negative, however. Um, with the CIP money and the ARPA funds, it'll, it'll make it whole. That makes-
Then that makes no sense whatsoever. We had a budget for the fourteenth street project and you're telling me that we're over on all sorts of different things without any authorizations from the city?
No, 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 just if you remember from the conversation, the fourteenth street budget was coming from several pieces of the pie. That payment, CIP, ARPA, street fund, gas tax, we had it, we had it all lined out. It's been lined out for the last, since we got it, yeah, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And in the course of some changes, personnel changes, whatnot, whatever you want to call it, um, I'll take full responsibility for it. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's not my fault. I'll take full responsibility for not, for, for anything that happened, but, um, we did not get things coded. I'm not going to say correctly. We just didn't take them out of the right, they weren't coded to the right fund. So what happened was some funds went negative. Well, all their funds are not negative and now we got to move some money. We just got to transfer some money to make, transfer the money to make it look, to, to make the, the negatives whole.
So if that four hundred thousand dollars would have already been transferred from CIP to streets, it would have been whole?
Part of it, yes.
The, the, so to answer your question, we're clearly, he's saying no. He's saying only part of it.
Oh, the ARPA, the ARPA funds. Oh, the ARPA, the ARPA funds will take care of the rest of it.
Well, I'm not in favor of using the ARPA funds for a project that we already had budgeted and theoretically had paid for.
But we had budgeted, we had counted on the ARPA funds to take.
Counting on, you can't count on anything without authorization from the city commission.
Do you think the best way just to make sure we're covered at the end of the year is to transfer the remaining of those ARPA funds to the special street fund? Is that correct?
I think we need a full accounting of the 14th Street project. I think we need to do that in a public meeting and we need to know not just which pies are coming from, but how big those pieces are and who's eating it.
Mayor, to answer your question, yes. Just authorize, just to be on the safe side to authorize. Is it the 130? So 105.
What's the 25 for?
Uh, Rock and Alley.
Out of your slush fund?
And we had discussed doing that.
Yes.
Previously. I mean, I'm fine with allocating that just so we know we're covered. If there is a federal requirement that we're not currently obligating or I guess covering.
We would be covered if you approve that and we can just do that in 2024 for, on our financial statement.
I think we should, I would be much more comfortable having concrete answers to that question. Again, this is the National League of Cities, not me. It says, an obligation is a contract, subaward or purchase order for goods or services or an inter-agency agreement. That's an obligation. An obligation is not a budget allocation or an amendment, an intention to enter a contract or moving funds into the general fund.
Nice. I think there is, there's a cutoff on ARPA fund requirements. Was it receipt of less than, was it 10 million? There's some, where there's, there's stricter standards if you received over $10 million.
Correct, Mayor. It's anything over, anything under 10 million, the, the use what you could use it for, the umbrella was much bigger without, without having to report it. Whereas with, if you received over 10 million, any city or entity receiving over 10 million had a stricter, a stricter reporting guidelines, requirements.
If it's helpful, I pulled up the article that Commissioner Kohlhoff was looking at and it, of course, says what it says and it, it cites as authority, the interim final rule published by the US Department of Treasury. So I was looking at that as you were talking and it, with the caveat that I have not had a lot of time to research this, it does say that the treasury has defined obligation, which is what must occur before December 31 of 2024 as an order place for property and services and entering into contract, subaward and similar transactions that require payment. So it appears to be some step in furtherance of obligating it. It doesn't have to be a written contract, but some, some formal action beyond a stated intention to use it in a certain way. And I think if I'm understanding correctly, we would use those funds to reimburse for the 14th Street project. And assuming that's an eligible expense under ARPA, I, after reading this, I think it would be appropriate to take action to commit those funds for that purpose, just to have that clearly established. So as we don't, if, if that's the intent, to not inadvertently run afoul of this obligation requirement. And because that's an internal accounting action as opposed to some payment that we're making to a third party, I, I don't believe it would be necessary to have a contract for that.
Does that more clearly, I mean, I think you see kind of the summary that I'm looking at here where it states contract, subaward, purchase orders. Does that treasury guidance give you any more clarity on what qualifies there?
No, not beyond what I just read, which is they're defining the term obligation. And I think those examples that you cited, that are cited in the the article are examples of what would qualify, but it defines an obligation as entering into contracts, subawards and similar transactions that require payment. And I'm not seeing any reference to purchase order, but I do see that, you know, in both the article, you're, well, in the article that you're reading from, it, it defines what are eligible uses and that includes in, investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. And I expect there's broader uses that are outlined here, to the extent those include any aspect of the 14th Street project. Again, I think just a commitment by the city commission to use those funds for that purpose would be appropriate. I can't think of any purchase order or contract that we could approve in this context, or that would be necessary in this context if we're simply reimbursing ourselves for those already incurred costs.
So it's your estimation that if we make a motion to allocate $105,000 for reimbursement of expenses pertaining to the 14th Street project, that would cover what you're reading?
I think you need to be really clear. The language, again, I'm just reading off here. It says, an obligation is not a budget allocation or amendment.
Right.
So I think whatever we do, we need to be very precise in our language.
And I, I view this action as something more than just budgeting. It would be in directing staff to move those funds to the appropriate fund as a reimbursement, which is essentially payment from the ARPA funds to ourselves as reimbursement. This is contingent upon my understanding that there are eligible costs up to 105,000 that qualify, but assuming that is correct and based on my limited research here today, I don't, I'm not seeing any requirement that they be paid directly to a third party if the costs have been incurred. In the absence of something that says otherwise, it would, it would seem that we could commit to paying those. But I do think the formal commitment is what is going to move us closer to complying with the obligation component, which is a deadline of tomorrow, the obligation. And I think it would be my, if we take action to commit those, that is different than just budgeting and planning to use them. It's the act of directing staff to move those funds as reimbursement by tomorrow that I think is a commitment to use them for a particular purpose as opposed to mere budgeting and planning.
What are we reimbursing? I mean, are we going to, we're going to put this into the general fund? It sounds like we're raising it to cover an overage.
It's the CIP street fund. It's the CIP street projects.
And so by earmarking it for reimbursement of applicable costs to the 14th, or with the 14th Street project, you would deem that as affirmative action in complying with what you were just reading from, Aaron?
It does not address this specific fact pattern. It talks about obligating them primarily in the context of taking action to approve a contract for their expenditure or purchase order. But I'm, I'm looking here and found an article that's referencing reimbursement for previously incurred eligible expenses. And if I, I might be able to provide a better answer if I can look at this. But Commissioner Kohlhoff's question, what are we reimbursing? I think again, that goes to, my opinion is contingent upon us having $105,000 of eligible ARPA expenditures somewhere in that project. And assuming that's the case, then I mean, we don't, we don't have, we don't have a contract or there's no third party to pay as of today and or anywhere on that project that I'm aware of. So it would seem under those circumstances that committing to reimburse ourselves is something more than budgeting and planning to use them. It is an affirmative use of those funds that is final, if it is, if that is your direction.
They did specifically state water and sewer were included in that. I'd be shocked if there wasn't $105,000 in water and sewer expense to the 14th Street project.
Didn't we already use ARPA funds? What were the ARPA funds in that project allocated towards?
There was $300,000 in ARPA funds that were, that were allocated.
What were those used for?
I don't have them line itemmed. Um, I'd have to pull pay apps to Smokey Hill to see exactly everything that was paid.
Aaron, do you want some more time to review that?
Well, it's never not helpful. I don't, you know, I think, I was just reading an article here and again, this is my preference would be to read directly from the regulation or the more official source, but reading an article that says that once the local government appropriates the funds to reimburse itself for an eligible prior expenditure, the funds are considered obligated and expended and are no longer ARP slash CSL FRF funds. They're unrestricted cash. A reimbursement expenditure of ARP funds is an actual expenditure. I would, I would benefit from that. I don't, if you want to move on to the next item, I could continue looking at this and seeing if I can develop any better or different thoughts, but I think my present opinion is that to be safe, affirmative action by you all direct, directing that those funds be used for the specific purpose and that that be effectuated in the fund balances of the city prior to tomorrow.
My concern is that I don't feel like we've got enough information about that project to know where, where those funds were spent or what we're actually reimbursing. I would feel much more comfortable taking the time to actually do it right. If that means we show up here tomorrow for 15 minutes to do what we've got to do, I think that we owe it to our constituents to make sure that money stays here locally. I don't know if that is in the form of a recess and reconvene or how we need to do that, but I would propose one o'clock tomorrow.
I can go pull pay applications and give you the exact accounting for 14th Street, probably pretty quickly. I'd have to pull in voices.
I'll reiterate, I don't, I don't know that we need to, I would rather have this spent somewhere productive, not reimbursing for what are likely project overages that should have been managed differently. If we're going to reimburse something, let's reimburse it in the general fund where our constituents have some say in how those are are done. Aaron, I don't know what, there's, there was mention of employee salaries, et cetera, reimbursing for those. Do you have any more guidance on that? And again, I think to me, I think that we would all benefit from some more time to look into this.
I don't have any more guidance. I did see that as one of the eligible costs for salary benefits and payroll taxes for eligible positions, provided that those positions are established before December 31 of 2024. I, I apologize. I think in order to speak more clearly on this topic, I will, I will need more time. I, I will acknowledge we have a deadline of tomorrow to obligate those funds and the nuances of what that means and how we go about that. My current opinion I've shared with you, but if time allows, it would probably help for us to take a breather and look at that further. I think once we reimburse ourselves, those funds belong to the city presumably on an unrestricted basis and those could be allocated wherever. It's, it's, they'd need to have a specific purpose for which they're reimbursed and it has to be one of the eligible ARPA expenditures as I understand it. And, and then from there on, once that reimbursement occurs, I would expect we could do whatever with those funds, subject to budgeting laws.
So $300,000 were already allocated from ARPA for the project. This would increase the total allocation of ARPA funds to 405,000.
That's what we would be doing today. Cause we, yes, there's $300,000 that was already obligated based on the original accounting. Yes.
Okay. Do you have any concern that there would not be $405,000 in eligible reimbursable ARPA expenses in the 14th Street project?
Not at all. I mean, no.
So I'm going to take a step back here. One of the things City Major Marsh said that we likely don't need to make any action, that this allocation of funds has already happened through the budgeting process. Or how? So we're getting so into the weeds in this whole discussion, I'm not even sure that the commission has to do anything here because those funds were already allocated through the budget. So how, the commission, commission makes no action today on this or tomorrow, we're still in compliance. We can still spend these funds.
That is our understanding. Yes, Commissioner, that's exactly what.
I have confidence that that understands correct. So it's like, I would vote for something to get specifically allocated today, but with that understanding, I'm, I'm not sure the commission needs to do anything today because that was already approved through the budgeting process.
I hear what you're saying, but we're also doing a budget amendment because $450,000 wasn't allocated in the budget correctly this year. So I appreciate your confidence, but I guess I don't have the same confidence that you do.
Yep. So it takes three commissioners.
And that was based off of information that you received from the League, League of Kansas Municipalities, correct? I think that's one of the big, I mean, I've.
That's information we've received from league, from, excuse me, from the league, from ICMA, from Department of Treasury throughout this whole process since it started in 2021.
I think that's, that's one of the downsides of National League of Cities is they're much more geared toward I think that's, that's one of the downsides of National League of Cities is they're much more geared toward large metro cities, which would likely be over that $10 million reporting requirement. I don't know if that's what those are attributed to. Those stricter standards of reporting. That would be my assumption. I guess really we just need sort of direction on, or the commission of the whole would like to go on this.
With respect to Mr. Witt's comments, he clearly said allocated. The guidance clearly says that allocation is not obligation. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
I'm comfortable with no action today. That's where I'm at.
Are you willing to reimburse it if it doesn't cover it? Or you just pull it out of your pocket if taxpayers miss out on $105,000? I'm not. I mean.
I'd like to hear what Wendy and Amy think.
I'm honestly comfortable with not taking any action because I thought that's, that was my understanding kind of that no action needed to be taken unless Aaron thinks differently. And I'm comfortable with that also.
And I agree with Amy.
As we sit here, as I understand it, everyone intends for those ARPA funds to be used for the same purpose. I think we, am I correct that we all agree on that? It's simply whether or not the necessary action has been taken to obligate them within the meaning of the Treasury guidance. And as I understand it, we were previously viewing the allocation of those funds within the budget as satisfying that. Without having had more time to look at it, I am not can't stay with absolute confidence what the status quo is. I take comfort that the League of Kansas Municipalities has an opinion. They're usually right on matters of that. One option would be to just publicly take action to move to reaffirm the city's intention to obligate the remaining ARPA funds to reimburse the city for previously incurred costs and expenses simply to reaffirm that and have that as a standalone item. And to take all other necessary actions in furtherance of that, just delegate that to staff. But that is all I can think to do at this stage. There is no contract, there is no purchase order, and there simply will not be one. So that, that would be my, the only thing that I would be inclined to suggest if, if we all agree that the intention is to use those funds is just to reaffirm that plan after today's discussion.
That's not my intention. I guess my intention is to put that into the general fund. If that means reimbursing salaries or if there's another mechanism for it, then that would be what I would propose that we do. I think there's enough question marks and gray area on the 14th Street project where we've got a bunch of pies and slicing in a bunch of different ways, but I'm uncomfortable with throwing money there, which is likely just going to be used to cover a shortfall that shouldn't have been there in the first place. We can reimburse that, put those funds in the general fund, and then we can spend them however we choose.
I, I think the expenditure of the funds, once they're reimbursed, is a separate matter that would need to be authorized. The, the only expenditure that would be authorized today would be the reimbursement expenditure. Those funds would then be placed in the appropriate fund to to demonstrate the reimbursement occurred. And then from there, I think where those funds go and how they're used would have to come back before you.
Yeah. And just so I'm clear, I was specifically looking for guidance on which salary or employee expenses were reimbursable.
Yeah, I, I'm not prepared to answer that today. I acknowledge that that, that is a category, but I think that's sufficiently nuanced that I would not want to opine on that without spending more time on it.
I, I did pull up that and did a quick search here. So it says payroll and covered benefits for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services. And similar, that is while responding to COVID-19. My name is Director Johnson. Are you aware of any funds that were used from ARPA to reimburse the city for specifically employee related COVID expenses?
I'm not familiar enough with that first report that was done. I'd have to pull that to see how it was reported the first year. I know there was a bunch of it was spent that way. I just couldn't tell you exactly how.
Like I said, I think we would all benefit from more time on that, when I would either propose going into recess until tomorrow at one or noon or whatever time works that we can get clarity and again, make the right decision for our city.
I guess right now with the way the funds are allocated, you're comfortable that you're in compliance. That's, I mean, that's.
Allocation doesn't count. I need to be very clear.
Obligation. Sorry, I just used the wrong term.
Well, the city has to, the city governing body has to allocate those funds. Or we have to, we have to obligate those funds. We have to spend the funds. City Manager Marsh can spend $25,000 of them, as he previously pointed out. But the city has to approve anything over $25,000. This body has to do that. But putting them into the budget is not good enough. Putting them in the budget and saying, hey, we'd like to spend that on X, Y, or Z. Again, I, I'm not sure what the League of Kansas Municipalities said, but I would think that the National League of Cities has probably got a more expensive lawyer, and I think we should, should listen to him. Or, you know, risk losing $105,000 or $130,000.
Because personally, I'm content with leaving it the way it is. But it's the business item, so we need affirmative action on the item.
Well, then I move that we don't do anything and that we're in compliance as a vote of confidence for our staff that we're in compliance with spending out these funds. And so no commission's action is needed on this. And then if we do find out that some guy screwed up, then I expect to hear about it during a city manager report or, or its own line item, but that's my motion is doing nothing.
To clarify, that's a motion to reject item 7C.
Right. Or it's, I don't even, yeah. I don't know how to specifically phrase it because I don't even think it needs to be something that we're talking about, so. And I'm not going to say anymore because it's all negative. That's, that's what I think.
Would you be open to letting city staff research that for 24 hours and meeting back here at one o'clock to make the same motion? Or to make a motion to affirmatively obligate those funds?
I think city staff will let us know if we need to have that.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting is we put that on the calendar now. And if we don't need to have that meeting, that's something that we can, we can send out in an email rather than not planning for it. Just like, I feel like we didn't plan for the ARPA funds.
I guess.
That was actually a question for you, Commissioner Whit.
I can say we can plan on having a meeting, but again, I don't think it's going to be needed. So sure, we can put it on the calendar.
I hope we don't have to have it, frankly, but I don't, from what I'm hearing, I don't think that we've got those, and those allocated funds obligated to conform to the letter of the law. And for $105,000, I think we can show up for 15 minutes tomorrow and give city staff and the city attorney time to do a little more due diligence.
City Attorney Martin, Commissioner Whit's motion, do you have any input on that?
As I understood it, it is simply maintaining the status quo.
Correct.
And I think if approved, it does that. So I do not, on the substance of it, if that is the motion you wish to make, I think it is worded properly.
Then on having a special meeting, procedure for issuing a special meeting? What's, can you remind me what that is?
My suggestion is that we don't have a special meeting, but recess until one o'clock tomorrow. So this meeting would just reconvene at one o'clock.
But if we recess, we have to come back regardless of.
I'll be at work tomorrow.
What would be a good time for you?
Well, I have patience until five, so.
The, the question about calling a special meeting, I, I believe a call by a majority of the city commission for a special meeting is what would need to occur. I would clarify a point I made earlier about taking action to spend those funds before the end of the year. I think I suggested maybe that fund transfer would, could or should occur. That does not need to occur. It's the manifesting the intent to obligate those. And I think everything that Commissioner Koloff read from it, I found it, it says what it says. It, I think if there were a case to be made, it would be that we're talking about committing the funds to paying third parties. And here, that's not what's occurring. The guidance in terms of approving contracts, purchase orders clearly speaks in terms of anticipating those to be paid to third parties. And because that's not what occurring, what's occurring, there is a case to be made that allocating that to pay ourselves that amount on a budget is adequate under the circumstances. I'm not finding anything that says that. But I can see why if you're planning to pay a third party, the mere fact that you budgeted those funds would not be adequate because you haven't taken any steps in furtherance of actually paying that third party by simply budgeting it. But when you're planning to pay yourself, you don't need a contract and the allocation, internal allocation seems to be much stronger step in the right direction. I haven't seen the allocation itself to see how that reads, and there may be nuances there that matter. But I don't, I don't think that the funds have to be spent before the end of the year. It's either we have it or we would want to simply reaffirm today or tomorrow, the intent to use them in that nature. And I think that's all that would be required. And I don't, as long as there are sufficient eligible expenses within the 14th Street project, that would not be an issue. That would be where we would likely get tripped up is if we approve that today and then find out that there aren't eligible expenses. I expect that if we were to come back tomorrow, my only recommendation would be, again, since there are no third party purchase orders or contracts to approve, to simply reaffirm our intentions to use them in that manner. And not ask that they be actually transferred or expended, but to just unequivocally put on the record that that is our plan and we're binding ourselves to do that. It may be that that's already occurred, but I think that would be the only thing I would suggest if we come back.
Just kind of use, use some language that I want to clarify. We certainly have contracts associated with that project. And have all those contracts been paid?
I believe they have been paid. That's where the issue is with the fund. They've all been paid.
We do, we do have a motion on the table by Commissioner Whit. Do we have a second?
What is the motion again? Is it just to affirm, like he said, we just need to affirm the funds or yours is just to not even do that?
Yeah, this is what we've already approved is we're in compliance. We don't need to make any action.
Okay. Can we, like, change the motion just to affirm? I think that would be wise. I mean, since our attorney is suggesting that.
Well, and to be clear, I, I am not telling you that that needs to happen. I'm saying that would be a fallback safety net if the status quo is not acceptable. And if we were to look at it over the next 24 hours, I think if we were to determine that it's not acceptable, the status quo, that's what we would end up doing anyway. So I think it is implicit in Commissioner Whit's motion and that he stated that is the reason why no action is required because he perceives them as having been already allocated. So to some extent, I think that is already baked into the cake. But I think to be more clear, you certainly could do that.
Is that something too, where we could, with Commissioner's Whit, Whit's motion on the table? We could also, I guess, make it explicitly known that if there is something found by end of day tomorrow to notify us as soon as possible to, if we need, if you found additional information that you felt warranted a special meeting to adjust that. Actually, I don't know that there will be anything. That's why I don't want to recess just to come back and adjourn.
Yes, that would be appropriate. If you approve his motion, of course, come back and alert you if we identify any further need for an action.
Again, the language that's been used many, many times is allocate. And it's, again, the guidance that I'm seeing says allocate is not good enough. So I would prefer the belt and suspenders approach. That's what we've got to do. I mean, it sounds like I might be in the minority here on what the funds are used for. I'm still not sure why those funds should be going to a project that should, apparently it's already paid for. I would much prefer finding a way to put those back into the general fund. But to me, I guess that's really the question is what's reimbursable? And I mean, make that decision. So I'm, I'm more than happy to work around your schedule if it is five o'clock. I think in any event, it should be a five minute meeting and we could all do.
You guys don't need me to be here, really. There's three of you.
Well, we want you though. And I think being able to do that by Zoom is fine, too.
Well, I'm, I'm good with what Aaron said. If Aaron thinks his motion works for the affirmation, I'm good with that. So I would second that.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I want to make sure, I kind of heard some different things happening between what Commissioner Meisenberg said and what you're saying with respect to Commissioner Whit's motion. Can you clarify that?
I, I, as I understood Commissioner Whit's motion, it is a motion to maintain the status quo and not take any action related to ARPA funds on the basis that the status quo is acceptable. And I, I want, I think I indicated this, but to the extent that is the objective, the motion was fine as worded. What I am not saying today, as of yet, is providing you with an opinion of the status quo. I'm somewhat reliant on what has been said and my review of these authorities during the meeting. I will acknowledge generally that the mere budgeting, according to this guidance, is not in and of itself adequate. But for the reasons I previously mentioned, I do think our case is distinguishable from those cases where we're planning to pay the funds to a third party. It makes sense that there would be adequate added, added procedures to jump through when those federal funds are being paid to a third party and that those commitments are actually made. So if, if that's the plan, his motion is fine. So if, if that's the plan, his motion is fine as presented, I think. Well, I've already, I, I would just be repeating myself if I told you that again. I think if there were anything done today or tomorrow, it would be to reaffirm the city's commitment. And I, I think, um, there, on one hand, there's no harm in doing that. And I think that would uh possibly shore up any doubt.
So you said something there that I maybe misunderstood the first time you said it. Are you saying there's a higher bar for when those funds are being paid to a third party? Uh, compared to, say, a situation where we're reimbursing the city for funds that have already been dispersed?
That is not within the literal text of anything I've read. I am inferring that uh, those references to what it means to obligate before the end of the year, where it says you must enter into a contract, approve a purchase order, or take some action in furtherance of creating a binding commitment. Those all seem to center around paying a third party. Otherwise, you wouldn't be entering into contracts. But we know from this guidance that you can reimburse yourself. And in those cases, there are no contracts. There are no purchase orders that we're entering into. Those have already been entered into and paid, and we're reimbursing ourselves. So I would expect that ma- maybe some of this guidance from the National League of Cities, where it's referencing contracts and purchase orders uh, has more relevance when the funds are being paid to a third party. But that is not within the literal text of what it means to obligate the funds.
It's clear as mud. Not your explanation, just.
I apologize, I.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't.
I, uh.
There's no real reference to, you're just inferring what.
Yeah, I, I think the, the only thing to do to be safe if, if there's a desire, and to the extent you're look, I, I realize I'm equivocating, but I'm trying to figure this out on the fly. I think, um, I, I realize that there's a, there's a very strongly held belief that the status quo is acceptable. But I see no downside or harm in reaffirming the city's commitment clearly and unequivocally in a motion. Whether that is necessary, I cannot say for sure. Um, I haven't, I haven't seen everything that everyone else has seen, but as I mentioned earlier, I think that'd be a motion to reaffirm the city's intention to obligate the ARPA funds to reimburse the city for previously incurred and eligible expenses associated with sewer and water on the Fourteenth Street project. I just write, wrote it out in here so I could read from it. And I, to me, that would be all we can do at this time of year to go above and beyond and make clear our intentions.
Commissioner, what would you be amenable to amending your original motion?
Yes. We started the motion on the table, so we need to.
Even, I think the original, there was a second.
Oh, do I need to withdraw? Is that what I do?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll withdraw my second.
So, uh, if that is withdrawn, um, we can just.
Original motion fails.
Start with the new motion.
Try the fresh.
As I read.
Okay. Original motion fails due to lack of second. Commissioner Whit, would you like to state your amended motion? Or you're not amended?
I'm not. At risk of further confusion, I'm just gonna say what my motion is what Aaron just said.
And I will provide that to the city clerk.
Perfect.
To be in the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Can you restate that for the record here as well?
A motion to reaffirm the city's intention to obligate the ARPA funds to reimburse the city for previously incurred and eligible expenses associated with sewer and water infrastructure on the Fourteenth Street project.
Is that, um, I guess to have some discussion on that motion, there were multiple places that that came from. Do we have a choice of where those reimbursements are made? So I think, uh, Finance Director Johnson stated it maybe you, it was your expectation that they would be reimbursed to CIP.
No, it'd be reimbursed to the fund.
To which fund?
Actual street.
The Fourteenth Street was mostly pre- was mostly budgeted out of the sales tax street fund. That's, and I, I apologize, I was using the wrong one. I said it was the special street, but it was actually the sales tax street. So that's the specific one. A million was from that, three hundred thousand was from ARPA, three hundred thousand was from CIP, which for the project was projected at a one point six million. It had, it is, it, it was spent more than that. And I know a part of that was the water and sewer, as he was explaining, which is what caused it to go over one point six. Again, I don't know the exact number of what it was that we ended up spending. Two point six is what the total project was.
And what part of that was paid by C clip? See, that was a C clip project? So the total budget, two point six, a million from K dot, one point six from us. We went over that, but we don't know by how much.
I'd, I, no, I don't know.
Do we have any further commission discussion on Commissioner Wood's motion?
I guess I'm, my, my concern is still that I think we need to put that, we need to determine where those funds are reimbursed. And I don't know that that needs to be part of this motion, but I think that that is a, a choice that the governing body should make.
And I, I think that's an area where, having read what I read, I think, again, the, the requirement is that they be obligated before the end of the year. The actual expenditure is December one of twenty twenty six. So, so long as they're obligated for a specific purpose, they can be spent over the following two years. And, uh, perhaps we could address the expenditure or transfer of inter-fund funds at a subsequent meeting. And I think that will comply with the statutory deadlines.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Commissioner Coloff?
I.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is eight A. Under items for discussion, consider approval of a master agreement with Olson, Inc. For engineering services for the city of Abilene. City Manager Marsh.
Uh, commissioners included in the packet is a draft of the engineering services master agreement with Olson. This has a five-year term. Both parties have the ability to cancel the agreement within a seven-day notice. We've added some insurance requirements and added cash basis compliances that have been signed by, agreed upon and signed by Olson. Uh, we recommend approving the engineering services master agreement with Olson.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I think when we had the discussion about this contract, um, it was clear that the intention was that this would be an annually, have to be reaffirmed annually. Um, it's, looks like to me that is not what we have in front of us. I don't know. City Attorney Martin, have you had a chance to review that?
Yes, so the, uh, section five point three authorizes the city to terminate at any time for convenience upon seven days uh, notice. And, um, that, I believe that was in the draft presented by Olson. That seemed, uh, not only consistent with what had been discussed, but more favorable to the city to the extent that there was a desire to, uh, part ways, uh, that would give the city the ability to do so at any time, rather than at the end of each calendar year. It, it, of course, would require the city to pay for any previously incurred expenses at the time of termination, but that, um, that's how it's currently worded. Otherwise, it will last for five years as a five-year term.
Just to say my thoughts on reading through the contract matches my expectation with um, uh, from the previous discussion that if the city hadn't, it would be an affirmative opt-out, not an affirmative opt-in, because then there's no real point to having a five-year agreement if you have to reaffirm every year. Um, as an active decision by the governing body, so having the ability to cancel within seventy days notice without cause fulfills what my expectation was originally, which was an annual um, uh, look at if the city wanted to actively opt-out, otherwise looking at staying with this for five years. So, in short, contract matches my expectations.
Do we have any other questions for city staff? I think none. I didn't entertain a motion. Or I guess we're just discussing it if, yeah, it's.
And I move to approve the master services agreement with Olson, Inc. for engineering services for the city of Abilene.
Now, second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I'm just gonna state my opposition to this. I think, number one, we need to follow our procedures. We're talking about a, a very expensive contract. And I think it's only appropriate that it be put on a study session before we put it on a regular meeting. Uh, I will further say, we've got a handful of projects and it seems like they're all going up over budget, which, um, may or may not be Olson's fault. Um, but I am very, very concerned about what Olson is charging to the city. I think you do fine work. I don't want you to think that you don't, but I do think the costs are above market. And I think that we owe it to our citizens to be more conscious of what we're spending on our engineering projects.
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Commissioner Coloff?
Name.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is nine A, city managers' report. City Manager Marsh.
There's no city managers' report.
Next item is ten A's that are motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Commissioner Coloff?
I.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're adjourned.
That name sounds familiar.
He said, um, he was, oh, city, how are you liking the commission?
Everything except for this last.
But he said, he goes, well, he goes, who's all on it? And I said, he goes, oh, I know who he is. I didn't know if you guys knew each other.
I'm guessing he's, so I use, uh, the Wamigo branch.
Okay.
And so I imagine he's on like the loan committee meetings, but.
He works, we grew up together. So his, his dad owned, or was president of a bank, and then Charlie Walker.
Okay. That's a good plan. I think I, I'm up here, is it C O R Y?
K O R Y.
We have five mutual connections, all of whom are in Salina, it looks like. Yeah, they want me to, but. I thought we were voting on Mr. Marsh's termination. That's my fault. I'm not gonna be nice, as I, we've got some part administration. I, you were, we had this talk. And maybe I, maybe I, I can think of, I can think of nothing that's more cruel. So here in San Diego, it's not qualified for a job, and then keeping you there despite evidence, every evidence that they, you know, they're doing up there. It's not to meet the right person. And that's our job to get the right person there. He's not the right person.
He gets a team.
We can be on my teams?
I'm on your team. I'm on your team.
Well,
I am.
We need, you're on team new city managers, but I'm the team that I want team members for.
Tell people you have a really kind side.
I think, um.